Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, sorry, excuse me, Tuesday, November 12th, 2013. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." [Music] Cue that to the National Phone Board for the images of our country and to our Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the minutes from September 30th? Councillor Rice.
I move the adoption of the minutes of the city council meeting held September 30th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of order? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And we go to the minutes of the city council organizational meeting held October 28th, 2013. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the minutes of the council organizational meeting held October 28th, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything that we missed? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. A motion for the adoption of the agenda? Look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Logan.
I'd move the agenda be adopted as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Any additional items? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. So that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I understand we did have one delegation that let us know in advance that they were going to be here. Coalition of Children's Concerned around Children's Services. If you'd like to come forward, ladies, and introduce yourself. Can we find an extra chair? We have a delegation of three. Could somebody from administration slide over another chair, please? Just come on down and have a seat. Make yourself welcome and have a seat when we have enough seats.
Have the chairman take her over.
There we go. Thanks very much, Michael. Ladies, welcome.
So we are here this evening representing the three local early childhood development coalitions for the Grand Prairie region. I'm Chantelle Napier, Early Childhood Development Coordinator with the Sparked Coalition.
And I'm Helen Saunders, Early Intervention Worker with Alberta Health Services, representing the City of Grand Prairie Family-Centered Coalition.
I'm Wanda Pandachuk from the West County Children's Committee.
And the early childhood development coalitions were originally established under the Alberta government's Early Child Mapping Initiative. And we've come to council to request the proclamation of November 20th as National Child Day in the City of Grand Prairie. And also for endorsement of the Northwest Alberta Children's Charter, which is a children's charter of rights that has been endorsed by all of the nine early childhood development coalitions across the Northwest region of Alberta. And it's a charter of rights that's specific to children who are growing up in northern Alberta.
Well, ladies, thank you very much for coming today. The Children's Charter will go through our regular committee business, but because you let us know in advance you're coming, I just so happen to have a proclamation here at hand. We wouldn't want anybody out there that's watching on television or on the internet to think you could just show up and get a proclamation. Not just that easily. But, council, I do have a proclamation to make in support of National Child Day. And so I'll read that proclamation now. Whereas National Child Day is celebrated on November 20th every year, and whereas this date marks the occasion when Canada adopted the United Nations Convention on the Right of the Child, and whereas the Northwest Alberta Children's Charter has been endorsed by all early childhood development coalitions across Northwest Alberta, and whereas the Northwest Alberta Children's Charter serves to promote and encourage a commitment to the positive development of children in our community, and whereas communities help create the environments that children need to thrive and succeed, and whereas the City of Grand Prairie recognizes that the future success of any community is largely reliant on the positive development of its children, now therefore I bill given mayor of the City of Grand Prairie to hereby proclaim November 20th as National Child Day in the City of Grand Prairie, and I sign that here this evening. Ladies, if you'd like to come around, I don't know if you have anybody to take a photo, but I'd be happy to present this to you. And so you can use it in your promotions and publications. And when we go to committee council, we'll have an opportunity to read the Children's Charter and have it go through our process so that they can formally make a motion to ratify and adopt it. Thank you for being here tonight. So that one piece of business for delegations was a little bit scripted, but this is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. Was there anybody else that wanted to come forward tonight and address council on any matter that wasn't the subject of a public hearing? Because there's an opportunity for you to do that a little bit later on in the agenda. I don't see anybody else coming forward. Everybody else that's here is just here to enjoy the council meeting, obviously. That's great to see, especially for our first full council meeting of the term. So we'll move on, and I'll close the delegation portion of the agenda. We'll move on to public hearings, which we had none, and into unfinished business. Item 7.1, Bylaw C-1226, the Animal and Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw. We're here for third reading. This is a carryover from last council. I see Councillor Logan. Sorry, Councillor Logan, you're in the queue, and maybe that was just his last speaker. Excuse me. Councillor Rice.
Do you want third reading and then any amendments?
That's right, we need to have a motion for a third reading.
I move third reading of Bylaw C-1226, Animal and Responsible Pet Ownership.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So a motion for third reading. We had the first two readings of this with the previous council. So that motion for third reading is in order. Discussion or debate? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I'd like to make a motion for an amendment on a couple of sections. 2.18, wording, "A person shall not keep more than four animals that are three months or older at any premises with a municipal address in the city." So it just changes instead of in the same residence within the city. And as well, 2.1, I would also like to make that change as well as only one nuisance or one vicious animal will be permitted at any premises with a municipal address in the city, instead of per owner.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much, Councillor McLean. And so you have that exact wording to be able to pass on to administration. Okay? So that motion for amendment is in order. So we'll look for discussion and debate on the amendment that Councillor McLean proposed. Councillor Rice.
If somebody had, say, five animals, would they then be able to apply for a... Not a... It's not a pound... Kennel license!
Councillor Rice, I would have to look for some feedback from administration. So I wonder if the enforcement services manager could find an open microphone. Just not...
Say, "An open mic, he'll start singing."
Just not, Councillor, to that spot.
Certainly. Councillor Rice, the kennel licensing provision has been removed from this bylaw. That's where the compromise to four animals from what was three was made. And that adjustment was made because it's been our experience over the last number of years that applications for the kennel licenses have all been denied because they haven't been able to get the consent from their neighbors.
So no household will have more than four animals? If they do, they have to get rid of one?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for that answer from administration. Any further discussion or debate on the amendment? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. So we would move on to third reading of the Animal Control and Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw. So any discussion or debate on third reading of this bylaw as amended with that change? Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick comment. This has been a fairly lengthy process, and so kudos to Chris and his staff for the extensive consultation over a number of months. I think the tweaking we did today to kind of clean up the business in terms of, yeah, household residents rather than owner, because there could be several families in one home, is useful. But in essence, I think the bylaw is good work and it's progressive in terms of how other municipalities deal with animal control issues these days. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. So that completes that piece of bylaw business. And we move on to reports. We had item 8.1, Outline Plan Amendment for Cobblestone East. I would look to Mr. Wright, I think, for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Given and members of city council. My name is Stuart Ray, Planner with the City of Grand Prairie. This is a request to amend the Cobblestone East Outline Plan. The plan was originally approved by council resolution in March 2007 and provides a framework for residential development and a school site on the subject property. The plan area is approximately 32.1 hectares of land, which is located in the east of the city, south of 100th Avenue, to the east of 92nd Street, and immediately adjacent to the current city limits. Development has occurred in the southern half of the plan area in the form of single detached dwellings in accordance with the outline plan that's in place. The landowner is requesting a very minor change to the outline plan, which consists of the removal of a cul-de-sac in order to improve connectivity and pedestrian circulation, and also with that change, there would be some minor associated residential lot reconfigurations. So the amendment would require map text and table amendments to the outline plan, which were incorporated in administration's report. And just to basically summarize, Table 2 and Table 3 within the report would be amended just because there's minor lot reconfiguration. There'd be some minor text amendments to Section 2.2.2 of the plan, and then Maps 4 through 12 within the plan would be amended just to show the revised roadway layout and residential lot connectivity. The outline plan was not adopted as a bylaw, and therefore there's no statutory requirement for advertising or neighbor notifications. Furthermore, just to identify to council, to go back, this is the approximate location of the amendment in the plan area and the closest residential dwellings that have been constructed, which are to the west, are in this location. And given the very minor nature of the proposal requested, administration felt that there wasn't any requirement for neighbor notifications in this case, regardless of no need for a statutory process. So administration recommends that council approve by resolution the amendments to the Cobblestone East Outline Plan as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Wright. So I'd look for a motion to get this on the table, and then we can discuss and debate. Have a motion to make that amendment? Councillor Rice.
I move first reading of...
I think we're just... This is a... We don't have to do three readings, I think, of outline plan amendments. Just a straight-out...
Okay. I move we approve the amendments to the Cobblestone East Outline Plan as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So open for discussion and debate on that motion? Councillor Rice.
To see the developer has eliminated a cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs have created nothing but nightmares, particularly snow removal, but also because of lack of parking for neighboring residences. So I am absolutely thrilled that this developer has chosen to go this route.
Thanks, Councillor Rice. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question to Stuart. Maybe, Stuart, how many more lots would be added to this new phase change if it was passed tonight? Just one question there.
Okay.
Mr. Wright?
And actually, sorry, Mayor Given, Councillor McLean, just to confirm in terms of total numbers that we have for units, we would actually be reducing the number of units overall in terms of the actual plan area from a total population, as it would be, of 1,274 to 1,271. And that's broken down in terms of the single-family units that would be provided, that are identified in your report. And then where there's no lanes, that's actually going to be amended as well. So there's actually, for the actual sort of total, it's going to be a sort of basically for three-unit reduction in terms of the actual overall plan area.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Rice.
I guess one of the concerns that I have is 27% of the residences have lanes. And my question may be to Mr. Galante or to Mr. Scherbach, when we approve a subdivision that will have lanes, do we put it into the system to amend our snow removal policies? We can't continue to approve residences that have back lane access unless we're going to keep these plowed. We're already seeing some neighborhoods that are a nightmare because the lane provisions to use the lane were never finished, and now they're creating all manner of problems for enforcement services, for fire, for that type of thing. So when we approve a subdivision like this, that has a great percentage of the subdivision requiring lane access, do we trigger the system to do this, to deal with this?
We'll try first with our community safety director. Casio?
Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For sure, the lanes are a very low priority in the snow removal, so you're totally correct. It's a matter of coordination with the transportation service department as well to be sure that the new lanes are incorporated into the map. However, the priority is low, so it would be an indication to avoid as much as possible the design of subdivision with rear access lane.
So if we're doing it like tonight, what happens? They just pray?
Mr. City Manager, would you like to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Whenever council approves a subdivision, the approval gets circulated to all the city departments, so the transportation department would receive a copy of this proposal, and they would know that they would see that there's additional lanes been approved.
So do you also... Or does... Where's Susan? She must be somewhere. Or do you say... Oh, there you are. Do you say, "Uh-uh, come budget time next year. Excuse me, council, you've approved six subdivisions that have rear lane access. You'll want to take that into consideration when doing your snow removal budget."
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
If you just want to turn your microphone on.
Thank you, Mayor Given. If there is a budgetary impact related to additional lane clearing, the matter would be referred to committee, and they could refer it to the next budget deliberations.
Okay, that doesn't quite... My question is, who triggers the fact that it will have a budget? Like, we'll approve it tonight, then we'll walk away feeling we're done with it, but we're not.
Well, I think, Councillor Rice, ultimately what you're getting to is the cost of growth. Every time the city approves a new subdivision that has any new sidewalks, any new roads, front or lane, there's an additional cost. And so ultimately, administration's doing this consistently every time we approve and build a new subdivision or new neighborhood. So there's obviously an ongoing mechanism, because every time we add another lane kilometer of road, the folks that drive the graders need to know they need to buy more gas. So I think that that practice has happened as a course of business for the City of Grand Prairie forever.
But I guess that's my point, is that, yes, we do it when we add a kilometer of road. When we approve a subdivision like this, we add a kilometer of road and a half a kilometer of lane as well. Like, so it's a double whammy.
Councillor McLean, I see you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Given. I had one more question as well. It doesn't quite meet the criteria of small lots. It's just one meter wider, is that true, Stuart? Instead of 11... What's considered a small lot? 10 meters or 11 meters? Because it's 12.2 meters, you're saying?
Mr. Wright?
Mayor Given, Councillor McLean, at this level, in terms of the actual sort of lot sizes, this is an outline plan, so it's very generalized, and that will come through at the subdivision stage in terms of sort of exact lot sizes. So it's not typically when you're dealing at the outline plan level that you would actually be sort of confirming exact lot sizes. It's just that you're identifying the actual lotting, and then it will go through the subdivision. If zoning is in place, or if not, it needs zoning. And then the zoning actually dictates what the actual sort of lotting size would be. But as it stands at the moment, because again, it's generalized to say that it's low-density residential, and then it would be down to the actual developer applicant to come forward through the zoning to actually confirm what they're actually specifically proposing for the zoning for the property.
Okay. The reason why I ask this, Stuart, is because like Councillor Rice said about back alleys, we've had developments where basement suites are granny suites, and then there's hardly much on the front street, the park. And even for our service, people grading the roads can't even service it well. So it's a pretty important factor to look at, because then somebody will want a granny suite and then the park in the front, and I'm very worried about this. And there's a 25% rule about small density homes or small lots. Is this a way of getting around it?
Mayor Given, Councillor McLean, certainly not a way of getting around it. This was just a proposed minor amendment in terms of the actual plan itself for the roadway connection. As I said, that what would happen at the next level would be the actual proposed zoning, and also the zoning would dictate what are permitted and discretionary uses, what minimum lot sizes are, lot areas. And basically from there, from what is identified at the outline plan level, that the applicant would then move to the zoning stage to determine what he or she would feel would be most appropriate zoning to get the number of lots they require.
Just one final question, and I'll back out. I know you're saying it'd be less of a total area, but when you look at this map of the cul-de-sac, which I know Councillor Rice said, and I like cul-de-sacs, you actually can get a bigger lot and actually move your home bigger and set it back. You're making them all a lot smaller than the average ones that could be bigger, and we don't have very many big in the city, but thank you, Stuart.
Okay. Councillor Rice?
At one point, we had discussed, and this might be for Mr. McIntyre, making the developer complete the parking pads at the rear of the property to eliminate, as I said, what's happening is that these aren't being developed as people buy the houses and move in, and then it's creating the service problems in the front of the property. At one point, we had talked about requiring the developer to finish those pads at the back. Did we ever go anywhere with that?
Mr. Wright or Michael? I don't know if either in administration can speak to that.
Michael, let him take it.
I don't know if I've got a very satisfying answer for that. The actual paving standard is something that the city has worked with the industry in terms of engineering and construction standards. With respect to pay parking pads at the back, I don't think the land use bylaw actually specifies that at this point as a requirement. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
It does. I didn't like the answer, but it does answer it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Logan?
It just occurred to me, listening to Alderman Ray, or Councillor Rice, that we've got a whole bunch of lots and areas, neighborhoods, that have lanes in the rear that may or may not have access. The whole of Swan Haven, for example, or the whole of Avondale. If we're to see a situation where a new subdivision can expect servicing from the lot side and still have the front entry, what does that say to residents of areas like Swan Haven or Avondale, who might very much prefer to be having their garbage put out in the back as it once was in another generation, or using access in the back? I wasn't too bothered by what Councillor Rice was saying, but as you think about it a bit, we may be setting up for a situation that might come back and bite us too.
Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just want to respond to Councillor Logan. Swan Haven and these areas are quite substantially different. You have 60, 70-foot front yard space, and you could park quite a number of vehicles in the front of the main street. On these ones, you're lucky to be able to park one vehicle. So there's a real big difference between back alleys and front space of these homes.
Is there anything further? Any further discussion or debate on the motion to approve this outline plan amendment? I'd just interject to say that I certainly support the removal of the cul-de-sacs. I think that this creates a much more walkable neighborhood, which is one of the priorities the council has in its municipal development plan. Anytime you remove these cul-de-sacs, you make a much easier path for a person to walk from one end of the neighborhood to the next. Certainly support that. And if I'm reading the maps right, it doesn't appear that there's a creation of any additional lane kilometers of back alley or alley. So certainly support the recommendation in the motion. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries with one opposed. Okay, so we move on to item 8.2, Bylaw C-1260-4, a land use bylaw amendment. And we'll look for a brief introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I shall sort of start with this one also. Mayor Given, Counselor McLean, at this level, in terms of the actual sort of lot sizes, this is an outline plan, so it's very generalized and that will come through at the subdivision stage in terms of sort of exact lot sizes. So it's not typically when you're dealing at the outline plan level that you would actually be sort of confirming exact lot sizes. It's just that you're identifying the actual lotting and then it will go through the subdivision if zoning is in place or if not it needs zoning. And then the zoning actually dictates what the actual sort of lotting size would be. But as it stands at the moment, because again, it's generalized to say that it's low-density residential and then it would be down to the actual developer applicant to come forward through the zoning to actually confirm what they're actually specifically proposing for the zoning for the property.
Okay. The reason why I ask this, Stuart, is because like Councilor Rice said about back alleys, we've had developments where basement suites are granny suites and then there's hardly much on the front street, the park. And even for our service, people grading the roads can't even service it well. So it's a pretty important factor to look at because then somebody will want a granny suite and then the park in the front and I'm very worried about this. And there's a 25% rule about small density homes or small lots. Is this a way of getting around it?
Mayor Given, Counselor McLean, certainly not a way of getting around it. This was just a proposed minor amendment in terms of the actual plan itself for the roadway connection. As I said, that what would happen at the next level would be the actual proposed zoning and also the zoning would dictate what are permitted and discretionary uses, what minimum lot sizes are, lot areas. And basically from there, from what is identified at the outline plan level, that the applicant would then move to the zoning stage to determine what he or she would feel would be most appropriate zoning to get the number of lots they require.
Just one final question and I'll back out. I know you're saying it'd be less of total area, but when you look at this map of the cul-de-sac, which I know Councilor Rice said, and I like cul-de-sacs, you actually can get a bigger lot and actually move your home bigger and set it back, you're making them all a lot smaller than the average ones that could be bigger and we don't have very many big in the city, but thank you, Stuart.
Okay. Counselor Rice?
At one point, we had discussed, and this might be for Mr. McIntyre, making the developer complete the parking pads at the rear of the property to eliminate, as I said, what's happening is that these aren't being developed as people buy the houses and move in and then it's creating the service problems in the front of the property. At one point, we had talked about requiring the developer to finish those pads at the back. Did we ever go anywhere with that?
Mr. Rice or Michael? I'm not sure if either an administration can speak to that.
Michael, let him take it.
I don't know if I've got a very satisfying answer for that. The actual paving standard is something that the city has worked with the industry in terms of engineering and construction standards. With respect to pay parking pads at the back, I don't think the land use bylaw actually specifies that at this point as a requirement. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
It does. I didn't like the answer, but it does answer it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Logan?
Just occurred to me, listening to Alderman Ray, or Counselor Rice, that we've got a whole bunch of lots and areas, neighborhoods that have lanes in the rear that may or may not have access, the whole of Swan Haven, for example, or the whole of Avondale. If we're to see a situation where a new subdivision can expect servicing from the lot side and still have the front entry, what does that say to residents of areas like Swan Haven or Avondale who might very much prefer to be having their garbage put out in the back as it once was in another generation or using access in the back? Wasn't too bothered by what Counselor Rice was saying, but as you think about it a bit, we may be setting up for a situation that might come back and bite us too.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just want to respond to Counselor Logan. Swan Haven and these areas are quite substantially different. You have 60, 70-foot front yard space and you can park quite a number of vehicles in the front of the main street and these ones you're lucky to be able to park one vehicle. So there's a real big difference between back alleys and front space of these homes.
Is there anything further, any further discussion or debate on the motion to approve this outline plan amendment? I'd just interject to say that I certainly support the removal of the cul-de-sacs. I think that this creates a much more walkable neighborhood, which is one of the priorities the council has in its municipal development plan. Anytime you remove these cul-de-sacs, you make a much easier path for a person to walk from one end of the neighborhood to the next. Certainly support that. And if I'm reading the maps right, it doesn't appear that there's a creation of any additional lane kilometers of back alley or alley. So certainly support the recommendation in the motion. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries with one opposed. So we'd move on to item 8.2, Bylaw C-1260-4, a land use bylaw amendment. And we'll look for a brief introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I shall sort of start with this one also. This is a request to amend Bylaw C-1260, which is the city's land use bylaw. Council did adopt the bylaw 1260 in September of this year and through the discussions, the ongoing negotiations and all the issues to be dealt with, administration did indicate to council there would certainly be certain housekeeping amendments that would be required with respect to the new bylaw. So Bylaw C-1264 is a request to amend the city's land use bylaw and to indicate that these items are housekeeping administrative issues for consistency in the bylaw compared to anything that's sort of substantive in nature that could affect the intent of the land use bylaw. So administration is recommending that council gives Bylaw C-1264 first reading and establish Monday, December 9, 2013, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing.
Thanks very much, Mr. Rice. So I look for a motion for first reading so we can get this on the table. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that first reading be given to Bylaw C-1260-4, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, and I move that council establish Monday, December 9, 2013, at 6:30 p.m. in the city council chambers as the date, time and location for the public hearing of Bylaw C-1260-4.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So that motion is open for discussion, debate as to date, time and location. I think it should be a different day, a different time or a different location. That's what we can debate. Any discussion as to date, time and location. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion also carries. That handles all of our reports and we'd move into committee business, starting with 9.1, the 100th Anniversary Committee, and minutes from November 4. Counselor Rice? Go ahead, Counselor Rice.
I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held November 4, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are all the i's dotted and the t's crossed? Looks like they are, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
And I would move that council...
Sorry, that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I would move that council provide $2,000 to the Dog Mushes Association to purchase a Spirit of Grand Prairie dog sled that will be presented to the winner of the dog mushing event on December 31, 2013. In speaking to that motion, the reason that it is here early, ahead of the budget presentation, is that this will be a custom-built sled and they needed an answer before the end of the month so it can proceed. I have a rather detailed report and budget that will be going forth to the budget presentation on Friday. I could give it to you now as well as Friday if you'd like.
Then you'd be Counselor O'Toole, giving away all the secrets ahead of time.
There you go. But this one was time-sensitive and I believe the director of communication did say that he had funds in his budget that could pay for that.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
No, as I said, I would be happy. I think things are falling into place and I prepared a detailed report that will go forward to Friday's budget session and I'm assuming that you don't want to hear it twice, but just that everything is really starting to gel for the 100th anniversary and it's very exciting and we're seeing sponsors coming forward, so.
That's great news. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, and thanks for your work on that committee. So move to 9.2, Council Committee of the Whole from November 4. We need a motion to adopt that set of minutes. That can be anybody. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held November 4, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we got everything in there? Looking like it does. I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. We did have some item of business coming out of that. Counselor McLean, do you want to carry on?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Also, I'll move that council authorize the City of Grand Prairie to participate in an application for the municipal benchmarking Alberta project Phase 2 submitted by the Town of Banff under the regional collaboration component of the regional collaboration program. And further that the City of Grand Prairie participant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries with one opposed. I think that handles all the items of business from that Council Committee of the Whole and it'd take us to 9.3, the Community Safety Committee from November 5. Counselor McLean, I think that was your set of minutes as well, wasn't it?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm moving council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held November 5, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also move that council approve the reallocation of $40,000 for the purchase of a new enforcement service patrol car from the vehicle rental budget.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Essentially, as I understood it from the committee meeting, a reallocation of operational funds into the capital budget to allow the enforcement services department, rather than spending money on leasing or renting a vehicle, to purchase one so that we can have more of our bylaw enforcement officers out on the road. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, you've got another long one.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the allocation of funds from the transportation levy account into the total amount of $519,079.33 as follows. $274,820.40 to be paid out to Studio Homes, Inc. as reimbursement for the levy credit owed for 116th Ave road construction completed as part of the development agreement for Copperwood Phase 1. And $150,000 to be kept by the city in a reserve account and used as Studio Home, Inc.'s contribution toward the design and the construction of the off-site stormwater management infrastructure for Phase 1 of the Copperwood development. And $94,258.93 to remain in the transportation levy account as Studio Homes, Inc.'s contribution to transportation levy payments that were deferred under the Sancho Falls Phase 3A development agreement. And the funds will not be released to Studio Homes, Inc. until the existing agreements between Studio Homes, Inc. and the city have been amended to reflect the reimbursement for the levy credit.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that rather lengthy motion? Seeing nobody in the queue, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
I think that's pretty well everything that came here, given.
All the business. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So we'll move on to our Corporate Services Committee from November 5, 2013. And Counselor Logan, I believe that was your set of minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held November 5, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote to adopt them. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Yes, I'd like to move that first reading be given to Bylaw C-1296, a temporary borrowing bylaw to establish a line of credit. That's a fairly standard procedure with council and as you note, I'll be asking for three readings.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So no discussion or debate on first reading? I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I'll move that second reading be given to Bylaw C-1296, a temporary borrowing bylaw to establish a line of credit.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. And as Counselor Logan noted, this is an annual thing that the City of Grand Prairie has, essentially an operating line of credit and I think it's been used very rarely, if ever, in the past 15 to 20 years that we've had it. Is that correct? Ms. Walker? Okay, any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Yes, I'll move that council have third reading of Bylaw C-1296, the temporary borrowing bylaw to establish a line of credit.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. And as Counselor Logan noted, this is a motion to have third reading here tonight. In order for council to have third reading of a bylaw on the same evening as first reading, this motion to have third reading must pass unanimously. If it does not pass unanimously, then third reading would come back to a future council meeting. So discussion and debate on the merits of having third reading here tonight. Seeing nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion does carry unanimously, so that means that we can have third reading here tonight. Counselor Logan?
Sure, I'd move that third reading be given to Bylaw C-1296, being a temporary borrowing bylaw to establish a line of credit.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. That motion carries as well for third reading. Counselor Logan, I think you had one other item of business on that agenda.
Thank you. The last item of business for this committee was the council award tender T6954713 to Fort Gary Industries in the amount of $334,000 exclusive of GST. This was a presentation by administration on this award and this looks like it's going to be a superior purchase for the City of Grand Prairie.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Discussion and debate, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I want to totally agree with Counselor Logan as well as these sandbox bodies are going to be stainless steel and they're planned to last twice as long as the previous steel ones, so they'll probably be on a second or maybe third truck, so they're going to last 15, 20 years. Very good move.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Counselor Logan, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that committee's business?
I have no other items of business to bring forward. I'd be pleased to answer questions, although I might not do a very good job of it.
Any questions for Counselor Logan? Seeing none, maybe everybody's just going easy on us since it's the first real council meeting of the term. Then we move on. We had no items of correspondence. We had one piece of delegation business, but I think that that was closed off with the proclamation. We have no notices of motion tonight and council members, I'm sorry I didn't ask ahead of time, has anybody had an opportunity to meet with any of our external agencies, boards or committees that you're appointed to? Kind of imagining that we haven't yet. If anybody had any reports, seeing none, then we'll move on to council roundtable and we'll start with Counselor Rice.
The city at the kickoff of the Pride weekend and this was the first ever Pride celebration to be planned for the entire weekend.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. And what Counselor Rice didn't note was that she stepped in for me when I wasn't feeling very well. And so Counselor Rice, thank you very much for taking that on and bringing greetings on behalf of the city of that important first-time event.
They did mention that Counselor Radburn had been there in the past and Counselor Logan, and so I wasn't quite sure if they were disappointed that it wasn't either one of them, but I pretended they were glad to see me.
Thanks, sir. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Thiessen?
I'd just like to say that it's an honor to be sitting on city council here today and to represent city council. I've been able to go to a few of the events, most recently the Remembrance Day tribute and parade at Crystal Center on behalf of the Legion. I was very proud to just be there as a member of the crowd and also representing council as it was a great time and other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Logan?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Given. There was a few events between last council and this, but I kept it short. Two that I'm very proud of is the same election week that we had and then I'll go after what Counselor Thiessen said, there was that I'm very glad to be on part of this council and very glad to be here. So one I'll report is on October 25, the same week as election, there was the Oktoberfest for Knights of Columbus, which I was involved in and they had the first sellout. I do believe I'm pretty correct to say they raised over $30,000 for different charities in the city, so I was very, very proud of that and there was a lot of individuals that helped make that a success. The other one as well, I heard that my name was announced at Remembrance Day Parade outside at the Army-Navy. I was not there, I was at the Remembrance Day Parade in the town of Grand Cash, which we have the grand alliance with. I went there for a personal reason. My grandpa's not even fought in World War II, but as well, I got to lay a wreath on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie at the Remembrance Day Parade, so I was very proud of that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. October 30, I had a Grand Spirit Foundation Needs Assessment meeting with a consultant doing the work for us. The 31st, I went to the United Way Chili Lunch with a number of council colleagues and staff. On November 4, I attended breakfast video conference hosted by Big Sisters Big Brothers that spoke to their mentoring project study and the impact, the positive impact on the children that received mentors. Then I had three deputy mayor commitments. November 6, I went to the Community Health and Social Service Association, District Association meeting and read a proclamation. On November 9, I represented council, mayor and council at the Christ Community Church 20th Year Anniversary Appreciation Event for Pastor Brent King and wife Robbie. Had an enjoyable evening and really respected the work of that couple and so did the congregation, I would say. And November 11, I attended and did a wreath laying at the Army and Navy Remembrance Day Ceremony at the Senatave. And the only other was on November 7, Grand Spirit Foundation Labor Management Meeting. And on that same day, a Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Annual General Meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Just Counselor Tarrant, if you want to get your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I had the privilege of attending several community fundraisers, first being Pards and then the YMCA fundraisers, being there on the city's behalf. I was at a fundraising luncheon for a student of Peace Wapiti Academy that had passed away and was able to be there on behalf of city council as well. I also had, this morning, had a great chat with Jim Hammond of the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society, who let me know that the plan that the previous council had supported is going to the province later this week. And so that's well on its way and looking forward to more good things to come.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Clayton?
I also had the honor of attending the Alberta's Promise and Alberta Mentoring Partnership Breakfast with a few fellow council members, as well the Annual General Meeting, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, and the Royal Canadian Legion Remembrance Day Ceremony at the Crystal Center. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So to be brief, on November 30, or excuse me, on October 30, I had the opportunity to proclaim Random Act of Kindness Day in the City of Grand Prairie and attended down at the Co-op where somebody bought a whole bunch of coffee for a whole bunch of other people that didn't know they were going to get free coffees. Later that day, had an opportunity to bring greetings to the GPRC Community Learning Day where they held an open house to welcome the community in and look at all the learning opportunities that are there at GPRC. As well, the college also launched their Trade Places Program, which is a really innovative marketing program that highlights people who are trading their careers for a different career. a different career and people who have even traded their former careers to be teachers at the college and so, and professors at the college. So really appreciate the, uh, work that they're doing there, uh, to promote all the opportunities that are available in our college. I also attended at, uh, on the 31st at the United Way Chili Lunch and participated in a conference call regarding Bill 28, uh, which obviously made some news across the province in the last couple of weeks. On Friday, the 1st, I had a opportunity to sit down and discuss with, uh, MLA Drysdale, the Build Canada Program. Uh, this was a result of a council motion directing the mayor to get in touch with our MLA. Um, Minister Drysdale was able to inform that the majority of the, uh, decisions to this point, uh, appear to be being made at the prevent, excuse me, at the federal level. And so if, uh, council wishes to, uh, continue to advocate for, uh, specific program requirements or program design around Build Canada, then we should be talking to, uh, our Member of Parliament and likely the federal minister, um, because it doesn't appear that, uh, details are particularly forthcoming towards the, uh, from the feds to the province. Uh, later that day, I had an opportunity to read a proclamation, uh, at Eastlink Center with County Reeve Lee and Bopray, uh, for Family Violence Prevention Month. And on Saturday, the 2nd, I attended again at the Eastlink Center to, uh, bring greetings and say hello to the new coach of the Grand Prairie Piranha Swim Club, uh, who has come to us from England. Uh, they certainly are looking at, uh, taking our club to the next level and it was great to see, uh, it was the first time that I'd seen, uh, the Eastlink Center, uh, in, uh, competition mode, uh, as the Piranhas were hosting their home meet with swimmers from all across the peace country in northeastern British Columbia. It was great to see the touchpads in the water for timing and I think the big screen was even in use, the score clock that council chose to put in, and so it was great to see, um, that facility, uh, in full swing. Later that evening, I, uh, attended at the, uh, Hindu temple to celebrate Diwali, uh, the Festival of Lights. This is, uh, as was explained to me, uh, like Christmas and New Year's all in one, uh, for our Hindu community, and so it was great to see that their new cultural center and temple, uh, was being put to good use. On Tuesday, the 5th, I was at the Grand Prairie Art Gallery, the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie, um, to welcome representatives from Wham Developments and Wexford Capital. Both organizations are involved in the, um, new retail development on the west side, where, uh, Home Sense is located. Uh, Wexford Capital are actually the landowners and they own about 200 acres of land out on the west side. Uh, they also own land across the street to the west, across 116th. Um, and so, uh, they have a significant stake in Grand Prairie. Um, both organizations were very bullish on, uh, Grand Prairie's future, so that was good to hear. And I also want to recognize Wham Development, um, for a, uh, a property developer from outside of the community to come in and sponsor a show at the art gallery, I think was, uh, great to see them taking that sort of interest into our community. Um, it, uh, speaks a lot about their organization and their commitment to the communities in which they operate. And, um, other than that, I don't believe I have anything else to highlight, other than, of course, the Remembrance Day ceremonies, which were mentioned by others. Counsel Rice?
Should council be, uh, making a motion or requesting you set up a meeting with our Member of Parliament, or is that something you just do, or what sort of? Like, I think the Build in Canada Fund is important enough, we need to make sure that Chris knows what we want.
Yeah, I think, uh, I believe the Build Canada Fund is still on council's list of advocacy items, and so now that we have, uh, a little bit more detail about which tree we should be barking up, we'll just go in.
Okay.
Start the lobbying, so I, I don't think we need a motion considering it's already on our advocacy items list. Any other discussion for our council meeting? If not, congratulations, we made it through without breaking any cups or glasses or tripping over each other too badly. Um, we'll adjourn our council meeting and, uh, we'll meet back again at county, City Hall for our next committee meetings. Thank you.